Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out today. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, March 22nd, 2021. It is 6:05 PM. Let the record show that all board members are present. If you will, please rise and join me in the Plague of Allegiance.
Our Plague of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board, we have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Miss Ware, Mr. Glenn, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening on our agenda is our recognitions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Glass.
We've got a couple of recognitions tonight, but first and foremost, we are very excited to have Ms. Candace Schnerbush and the Tiger Brew Club here today. There they come. The Brew Club runs a daily coffee business at Cape Central High School where the wonderful workers you see here with us this evening serve up delicious drinks with lots of smiles and cheer on the side. Each day, they take orders from the CHS staff members and deliver personalized drinks to the rooms. Tonight, they are here to treat us to our favorite beverage, and we would like to present them with some certificates of appreciation in return. Are they coming in, Kristin?
They're coming.
Okay.
I know you guys want your tasty drinks with a potion.
They're worth the wait.
That's right.
Dr. Glass, patience is a virtue.
I've always struggled.
It will be well worth the wait.
Yay. We're so excited to come here. You see all those gentlemen and ladies up there? That's why we're here.
Ms. Sheriff, she might introduce these guys to the audience.
Well, this is Faith Spears, Darian Thomas, Summer Ford, and then Cory White.
Oh, thank you. Is it actually on?
It's on. Okay. It's hot.
Welcome to our school board meeting. Thank you so much for the wonderful drinks you're serving us.
We have the cold right now. We didn't want to overload Faith here. All right, we have Kyle and Missy and Neil and Jeff. So, are you guys at the right spots?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so here's Kyle. Mr. McDonald. Hey.
I'm McDonald.
All right. Okay. Um, Darian, this one's Kyle, right here.
Thank you.
And Summer, do you want to ask him if he wants anything?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and ask.
Would you like French vanilla?
Oh, no, thank you.
Or hazelnut?
No, just the tea's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then Mr. Glass is right here, so go ahead and eat it here.
Thank you, sir. Looks delicious.
And Jeff is right here.
He must be impressed with it.
She has the sweetest smile.
Thank you.
And then one of them, if they want extra sweetener? Go up to them. Thank you.
You know what? I would love one of those yellow packets.
What is that?
The sweetener?
Splenda.
Splenda, that would be fantastic.
And then Missy, right here. Can you turn all the way around?
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cory White. That one goes to her.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Summer, do you want to ask her?
Yes.
Would you like some French vanilla?
No, thank you. I like it plain. Thanks.
All right, and then we have other students coming in also.
Perfect. Bring them in. You tell them not to go anywhere. We have certificates for them.
Okay. Do you guys want to go find your work pair?
Ms. Sheriff, they can stay in here so they can get their certificate. Hey Cory.
Cory and Cory, Summer and Darian.
They can stay in here.
Faith, can you stop? There you go. Okay. And can we...
Stay here?
Yeah, we'll have her stay here and then the others can carry theirs.
Mr. Cook, you going to get your caffeine yet?
I'm excited about it, sir. I'm worried.
We had a long weekend, so yes.
This is Anna Daniel.
Whoops, sorry Anna. This is Emma Watson.
And behind me is Casey Miller. And then this one is Mr. Jared. Oh, wait, no, that's Casey, sorry.
Oh, Casey. I need you to...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Watch our video today. Nice and gentle.
Thank you so much.
Do you need any creamers or anything?
No, I don't. Thank you though. Thank you so much.
All right. Good job, guys. Okay. Let's go ahead and do a Tiger Brew Group picture.
Okay.
You want to take your gloves off? Can you guys go stand by Casey and Emma? Casey, you want to take your gloves off now? This is Anna Daniel.
Whoops, sorry Anna.
This is Emma Watson. And behind me is Casey Miller. And then this one is Mr. Jared. Oh, wait, no, that's Casey, sorry.
Oh, Casey. I need you to...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Watch our video today. Nice and gentle.
Thank you so much.
Do you need any creamers or anything?
No, I don't. Thank you though. Thank you so much.
All right. Good job, guys. Okay. Let's go ahead and do a Tiger Brew Group picture.
Okay.
You want to take your gloves off? Can you guys go stand by Casey and Emma? Casey, you want to take your gloves off now? Anna. Do you want to take your gloves off? That just goes straight back, huh? Straight back.
And to show our appreciation for our fine drinks this evening, we'd like to give you a certificate. And it reads in recognition and gratitude for service to others with Tiger Brew Crew. And first is Tyrese Curry.
Tyrese couldn't make it today.
Oh, okay.
Thank you though.
Anna Daniel.
Anna.
Brett, Dr. Glass. And the gray shirt. Right there, Anna, there you go, buddy.
She's just too busy smiling.
Brittany Marsh.
Brittany couldn't come either, sorry.
Casey Miller.
Yes, she's up here by Anna.
Summer Pecord.
Right here by Casey and Summer, so they know it's you.
Faith Spears.
Right beside Summer.
Darian Thomas. Emma Watson.
Emma, can you raise your hand?
There you go, good job, girl.
And Cory White.
Raise your hand.
Go read. Short one? Is there one more in there?
No.
Nope, we'll get one.
Yeah, we'll get one.
One, hold up, and we'll get one.
All right, everybody smile. There you go, buddy. Yeah, they want you in there too.
Oh, okay.
This is awesome. That was great.
Thank you so much. This is awesome. I really appreciate you guys.
This is awesome. That was great.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This is awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes.
Then you need a donation or anything? A dollar or something?
Oh, yeah, I'll take care of it. I got you covered.
Okay. I'll take for everybody that needs. Apparently.
High five. Okay. High five. Good job. High fives? You did a great job.
That's fantastic. Awesome. That's going to be really... That is awesome.
I'm really excited about that.
And so the teachers are on in the morning and then they come around at the...
They come around with a cart and that's part of their job. That's awesome. This is a weird...
That's awesome.
Next up, we have our terrific Tigers. We're pleased to recognize our March Terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected and received this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. So Kristin, without further ado, would you bring those in?
Let's let the traffic...
I know, patience, that whole patience thing.
Let's drink that tea.
Yeah. Sit on it.
Dr. Glass, what did one doctor say to the other doctor?
Oh, wait. Wait.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. Who's reading?
Alma Schrader Elementary, Hank Priest, 4th grade, son of Karen and Jeffrey Priest. Hank is an outstanding athlete, student, and friend. He's always thinking of others and looking for those who need help or attention. He works hard at school and even harder on the soccer field. Hank shows he has a caring heart and also a strong work ethic.
That is awesome.
Now we'll move out of your way so you can get it.
You want a picture without a mask on?
Sure.
You can take your mask off for a picture.
Let me see your smile now. All right. Big one.
His face is all red. Embarrassing.
Congratulations.
Blanchard Elementary, Maya Patengill, 3rd grade, daughter of Jessica and Justin Patengill. Maya is so hardworking. She sets her goals high and puts in the effort to achieve them. Not only is she successful academically, she is a continuous role model to others. Maya also goes above and beyond to help others around her and offers kind words and motivation along the way.
We're out of the way.
Want a picture without a mask on? Clifford Elementary, Raylan Davidson, 4th grade, daughter of Tricia Davidson. Raylan has a big heart and is kind to everyone. She always tries to convince her classmates to treat each other fairly and with kindness. Every class needs a student like Raylan. We're so proud of her.
This is for when you become famous. Yeah, I would do. Thank you.
Franklin Elementary, Samantha Arnold. Am I saying that properly? Hopefully. 4th grade, daughter of Kristen Arnold and Douglas Arnold. Samantha is an exceptional student. She is respectful, responsible, and extremely hard worker every single day. She's a friend to all her classmates and is a model student. Congratulations. We're so proud of you.
You're good, right there. We'll make it work. Oh, there, perfect.
You want a picture without a mask on?
Yes.
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 All right, Jefferson.
Jefferson Elementary, Brayden Smallwood, 5th grade, son of Brittany and Brandon Smallwood. Brayden comes to school each day with a positive attitude and a get things done attitude. He's always willing to participate in class and will go out of his way to help a classmate. He is kind, respectful, and an outstanding leader. Brayden is a true definition of an exemplary student.
All right, Jefferson, please.
One more right here. Gotcha.
You can take a picture without the mask on if you want.
Yeah, that's one of my students. All right. Central Middle School, Lavelle Williams, 5th grade, son of Michaela Whitehurst.
Lavelle is a remarkable student who's always respectful and kind to others. He's a perfect role model for others, and CMS loves his roaring behavior and is very proud of him. Lavelle, keep up the great work.
Take your mask off. Congratulations.
All right, Junior High.
Central Junior High School, Lincoln Kiersey, 8th grade, son of Catherine Kiersey. Lincoln is always ready and eager to learn. He comes to class excited to be here. He's also very observant of his classmates and aware of their needs. Lincoln is constantly reaching out to others and helping his peers.
I don't need a picture of myself, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Can you get a picture without a mask on?
Yes. He's not going to like it, I guess. Thank you, son.
You don't sound too good.
Central High School, Bronson Lively, 12th grade, son of Tracy and Brad Lively. Bronson has consistently been an excellent student. He's a kind and pleasant young man who's a joy to have in class. Keep up the good work, Bronson.
He said, "No, it's all right."
He wanted you on the school.
One down, Brian.
Yeah, but is he the next one?
That's it, sir.
We're not students.
All right, any other recognitions?
That's it for this evening.
All right, so next up, we have information proposals, comments from the audience. Did we have any, none this evening? So we'll move right into our informational reports. And first up is Board President's Report. Well, the only thing I have is, well, it's March, so that means as a board president, it's kind of bittersweet in that it's your last board president meeting and it's your last board president meeting. I just want to thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to lead this group through this interesting year, to say the least. Jeff and I were talking previously, and it's been an interesting year, all this stuff that's gone on, and really proud of the work everyone's done and all the hard work, especially the administration, staff, and all our students have done to keep us going. You look at the nation right now, and there's a lot of schools that have not been in session at all. It's all virtual, and we're, on the other hand, we've been in session the entire year except for one week at the high school that we had to close down to clean. And that's really saying something about the leadership that we have within this district. And I'm proud to be the president this year, and I appreciate your support in allowing me to do that. And that's all I have for this evening, so thank you. Next up, we have our Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, I just want to say it's an honor. It's been, you know, been a hard year, but we've gotten through it, and I think we've worked very well as a board together, and just appreciate your service, Kyle, and your leadership. And, you know, whatever comes this election season, I wish you both best luck. It's been great having you on the board. If that changes, you know, it's always weird this time period because you don't know if you're going to see them next month or not, but I always brag on this board how well we are, we work together, and how well that you guys are out there and have the best interest of all our students in mind, and I can't thank you all enough for that. So with that said, a couple of quick things tonight. I'm happy to report that we have had over 300 employees vaccinated this past Friday. That was a huge milestone for us. We had a number, we had a very high number of staff members that had been vaccinated before that date, so we had 300 last Friday, and then we had several more that were vaccinated ahead of that. So I'm not real sure where we're at as far as total vaccinations within Cape Girardeau Public Schools, but we're well on our way. Overall, nearly 1,000 educators from Southeast Missouri and even St. Louis were able to receive their shots Friday at CHS, so 1,000. That was Jackson and surrounding regions. A big thanks to Broadway Pharmacy, Johns Pharmacy, for their collaboration. Our second dose clinic will be on April 9th, but first dose appointments will also be available that day. Congratulations are in order. The Junior High Robotics Team are back in action again. They're going back to state. This is only their second year in existence. They went to state in their rookie season, so it's extremely exciting for them to be going back. The Southeast Missouri and KFES 12 will also be doing a feature this week on the team. So congratulations to them as well. That's all I've got.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Glass? All right, so we'll move on to our Academic Services Report.
We can talk about it now or we can talk about it down below, whatever you guys would prefer, but we have some information on the new ELA textbooks. So would you like us to hold it?
Yeah, why don't you just hold and discuss it underneath the business side?
Maybe I'll just let you talk.
Somebody talk. That's all you have?
That's it.
All right. All right, so next up, we have our Instructional Technology Update. Mr. Russell is not here. Is there anything?
No report.
Okay. Next up is our Community Teachers Association Report. I see her in the audience. Good evening.
Sorry. Good evening. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank you guys for supporting the mask mandate and because a lot of us think it's because of the mask mandate and the support of having the mask mandate in our schools that we've been able to go and be in school. The other thing, and I've never had so many teachers contact me because they wanted me to say this out loud, so I have to say it out loud, and I'm sure you already know, but they really, really, really support keeping the mask mandate as long as possible, especially until they can get their second vaccination, which is, I think, two weeks after the second vaccination is when they'll feel safe. So they told me I had to say that tonight, and that's weird for me. I feel weird, but because many of them have worked very hard this school year and, you know, really some of them above and beyond. I'm really impressed with some of the things I've seen teachers do, even in the midst of everything being different. I have to tell you for myself, you know, being there at 7 o'clock isn't that big of a deal. That's, we have to be there earlier, because I don't have little kids, but I know there's teachers with little kids who have, who had to get daycare, right, to put their kids in daycare before or after school. I know that there's teachers who are doing things to make sure that our kids at school are taken care of, right, and putting them, you know, in, even above their own kids sometimes. So I just wanted to celebrate them and celebrate what they've done this year and then to thank you for your support in helping keeping us safe and having the vaccines and having the mask mandate. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? No? All right. We'll move on to our Treasure and Finance Report.
Sorry, I'm driving tonight, too. Okay. And I can't do multiple things at one time, apparently. Okay, so here we go. This report is for February. Beginning fund balance, February 1st, for the general fund was 19.6 million, 5.9 million in revenues received in the general fund, 1.3 expenditures in the general fund, and 1.4 was transferred to the special revenue fund, which is to cover salaries of our certified staff, leaving us with an ending fund balance, February 28th, of 22.7 million. The banks that the funds are located in is listed below. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Support and Services Report. Mr. Crowe.
The Southeast Missouri and Cape ES-12 will also be doing a feature this week on the team. So congratulations to them as well. That's all I've got.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Glass? All right, so we'll move on to our Academic Services Report.
We can talk about it now or we can talk about it down below, whatever you guys would prefer, but we have some information on the new ELA textbooks. So would you like us to hold it?
Yeah, why don't you just hold, we'll discuss it underneath the business side. I know.
Maybe I'll just let you talk.
Somebody talk. That's all you have?
That's it.
One thing?
That's it.
All right, so next up we have our instructional technology update. Mr. Russell is not here, is there anything?
No report.
Okay. Next up is our Community Teachers Association Report. I see her in the audience. Good evening.
Sorry. Good evening.
Good evening.
The first thing I'm gonna do is I want to thank you guys for supporting the mask mandate and, because a lot of us think it's because of the mask mandate and the support of having the mask mandate in our schools that we've been able to go and be in school. The other thing, and I've never had so many teachers contact me because they wanted me to say this out loud, so I have to say it out loud, and I'm sure you already know, but they really, really, really support keeping the mask mandate as long as possible, especially until they can get their second vaccination, which is, I think, two weeks after the second vaccination is when they'll feel safe. So they told me I had to say that to you tonight, and that's weird for me, I feel weird, but, because many of them have worked very hard this school year and, you know, really some of them above and beyond. I'm really impressed with some of the things I've seen teachers do even in the midst of everything being different. I have to tell you for myself, you know, being there at 7:00 isn't that big of a deal, that's, we have to be there earlier, because I don't have little kids, but I know there's teachers with little kids who have, who had to get daycare, right, to put their kids in daycare and before, after school. I know that there's teachers who are doing things to make sure that our kids at school are taken care of, right, and putting them, you know, in, even above their own kids sometimes. So I just wanted to celebrate them and celebrate what they've done this year and then to thank you for your support in helping keeping us safe and that, having the vaccines and having the mask mandate. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Nope, all right. We'll move on to our Treasure and Finance Report.
Sorry, I'm driving tonight, too. Okay. And I can't do multiple things at one time, apparently. Okay, so here we go. This report is for February. Beginning fund balance, February 1st, for the general fund was 19.6 million, 5.9 million in revenues received in the general fund, 1.3 expenditures in the general fund, and 1.4 was transferred to the special revenue fund, which is to cover salaries of our certified staff, leaving us with an ending fund balance, February 28th, of 22.7 million. The banks that the funds are located in is listed below. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Support and Services Report. Ms. Crowe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all here. First thing I'd like to discuss with you is that, to date, we have served almost 17,000 Crispitos this school year, which, because of our protocols in place, those numbers are down just a little bit, but nonetheless, children are still getting their Crispitos. I handed out earlier numbers on where we're at with our reimbursable meals and we're pretty par on course, except the month of February is a little bit different, just because we had had so many snow days in February that we lost quite a few days there. However, our reimbursables look on track to have another successful year with making sure our kids are fed with CEP. Switching gears, two schools at our last professional development on February 26th went through our Alice training. We have a couple more schools to go. And all buildings, again, with receiving Alice training for the year will have been completed that, and that's on the schedule and we're currently scheduling out for next year with all of our PD plans, so those are fortunate that we have to do those trainings, but they are worthwhile and staff is appreciative that we do those. Next thing I'd like to talk to you about is uniforms for our sports teams. We have a, sports teams, bands, activities, so on and so forth. Just to keep you all in the loop, what we're gonna be doing is, we're going to develop an administrative procedure with our principals, athletic directors, and coaches with Dr. Glass and Cabinet on basically what do we do with those surplus items? And what we're looking at being able to do is allow some of those old uniforms, because there is no resale value to them, you know, you're not gonna have another school buy your band uniforms because of the wear and tear, the cut, the fit, the mascot, the school colors, you know, it's just not a marketable item. We're gonna look at during the cycle of years that those activities come up in getting new uniforms, whether it be band or football or whatnot, would be able to, we would gift those uniforms to that specific program and then at that point they would be able to maybe have a fundraiser with them or, you know, sell them as, for a spirit day or something along those lines. But we do have a policy that talks about surplus items, so instead of auctioning them off, they would be able to go back and sell those items, the band would sell them, and then be able to use that money back within their activity account and so on and so forth. Same with any other activity that would have a uniform. So, we are exploring that and doing that this year, or hopefully this next month, and coming up with the procedures to do that for those teams. Other than that, we'll have a bigger discussion coming up during our business portion on bus contracts, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you for the report. Next up, we have Board Reports. First up is MSBA delegate report.
Really, all I have is, there is a regional meeting coming up next Tuesday and then the Legislative Forum on April 12th, something to think about attending.
Who's going up to the regional meeting?
To Perryville.
Yes.
I'm planning to go unless I get called to Jefferson City.
I'm going.
Okay.
Yeah, I can take it. We can leave here, I can take a district, we can talk about that after the meeting, if you'd like.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. And then our Legislative Report.
Yeah, of course, the Legislative Forum that she talked about up in Jeff City on the 12th, so we just have to register for that if we do want to go. And then I did send you guys a link to the MSBA Action Center, which is just a nice, summer little spot to go grab information on active bills and they're obviously on it all the time, so it's nice and fresh sets of information, so those would be the two big pieces.
Is anyone planning on going to the Legislative Forum?
I am.
You are? Because I think that's one of the governments' items.
Seen governments, yeah.
Thank you.
People qualify this year, you might. Yeah. Because there were so many that didn't participate, like Inseptival, you know, the online.
The annual.
The annual conference was online and some didn't, weren't, participated.
And I think that we, do we not have the, what, the advance, the...
Yeah, I'm submitting, I'm submitting mine, so.
The masters, to get your masters.
But when you move up, I don't know if anybody's moving in too.
Because there's three different classifications, that you gotta have at least one in the top two, I think, and I know I'm not there.
But this year, this year, I don't, I don't believe that we're permanent in by, so, but Missy is planning on going, so.
Okay. Either way, thank you.
We found out that Emma McDougall won the regional voucher stuff.
Oh, great, great.
Fantastic, that's wonderful.
We just found that out last week.
Okay. That's great.
She's aware of that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
She contacted me.
Actually, that's how we found out, for some reason this year, they didn't send it to the district. I asked them about that and they just said, well, I get notified the students, so, anyway, she'll be recognized at the regional meeting.
Good. And next is Cape Public School Foundation Report?
Yes.
Ms. Ware?
Before I give that, I want to say that this also, like Kyle, Mr. McDonald, possibly is one of my last meetings in nine years. It's been awesome. You guys are phenomenal, staff is phenomenal. I can't say not one bad thing. I've learned so much. We have a very special district here in Cape Girardeau. We have big hearts as administrators and board members and faculty. It's just, you guys are just really awesome and this has been wonderful for me these last nine years. And I'm so sure I got my fingers crossed, I don't know about you, buddy, but I'm looking for another three years. So, anyway, on that, thank you all, thank you all. On the report for the foundation, foundation will be hosting its annual golf tournament at Cape Country Club on Friday, May 21st. Golf teams and sponsorship options are available and you need to contact Danny. That's it.
All right, any questions? Thank you for the update. Next up, we have our items for consent agenda. So this month, we have minutes of previous meetings, February 22nd, 2021, payment of bills, CHS teacher laptops, and cases for CHS and CA student Chromebooks. Do I have a motion to approve the items?
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Ritter, any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items are approved. Next up is our business items. First up is discussion of Cape County Health Department COVID-19 response. That I'll turn over to Dr. Glass.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. As you all know, March 8th was a big day for Cape Girardeau County where the Cape County Health Department lifted the mask mandate and downgraded that to strongly recommended. And we decided to throw that on the school board agenda because what, I've been asked a lot of questions on what does that mean for the school district? And from a superintendent standpoint, after listening to a lot of my faculty and staff and parents, and I've had some from both sides, I feel like it's in our best interest to continue with the mask mandate until we, at least until we're fully vaccinated, if not until the end of the school year, and I'm willing to reassess that and reevaluate that at the next school board meeting, but that is my position. I am happy to report that there are zero active cases right now in our school district.
Great, that's awesome.
But that, you know, it only takes one to quarantine a group, and I would hate to see any of our athletes lose out on the spring season when they've already lost out on last year's spring season, you know, or any, any club, any, anybody, you know, any student that gets to miss out on those end of the year activities because we could have prevented it. Now, some we won't be able to prevent anyway, but some we can with the mask mandate. So, that is my position, I'm willing to discuss it, but I think it's prudent to go ahead and extend that. I'm wanting these masks to go away as quick as anybody, but I think right now, the time we're in, we needed, we need to keep them. So, with that said, I'll open it up for discussion.
I would just share that I'm thrilled to see our numbers going in the right direction in Cape Girardeau County. I do agree with continuing it and I think that we need to take the approach that we're going to continue to monitor the current situation, not make any long-term forever decisions, but every month, we can take a look at it and see. I do think that until all of our staff members have had a chance to receive that second dose, which is coming up in April, we absolutely should continue it through that. That will also, if we take another look at it again in April, that will give us about six weeks worth of, six or seven weeks worth of data since the county downgraded their recommendation to look at, and I think that having that information available to us and having that data at hand will allow us to make informed decisions. And so I would wholeheartedly support keeping the mask mandate so that we have a little bit more time to see what the county numbers look like, since it's been downgraded, and more importantly, to give our staff that opportunity to receive the second dose of the vaccine. That's where I would stand on that.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I just concur, I agree.
I think it helps with consistency, too, because, I mean, CMO, still, everybody's supposed to wear a mask in the classroom, inside buildings, Jackson's doing masks still, too, so I just think that helps consistency in the region.
Yeah, I mean, our business is the same way, we have to wear masks and so on. Concur.
And I will say, so I know somebody that works for one of our private schools in the area, and they, as soon as the county did away with the mask mandate, they dropped the masks for a week because in that one week, they had to shut down two whole classrooms because the students were exposed to where, at least in hours, if they have a mask on and they're in the proximity, they don't have to quarantine everybody, just people that are immediately in contact. So, as Dr. Glass said, they get to participate in sports and clubs and graduation and prom and all the end of school year activities. I mean, we've done such a good job of keeping our schools open, I would hate to put that at risk. And I know mask fatigue is a real thing, and I know there's kids out there that struggle with keeping the masks on, but I would just ask everybody to be patient just for a little bit longer and get through the next few weeks to... So you have all of those end of the school year activities that people cherish so much, that we didn't have last year. I mean, you had a student that was a senior last year, and, you know, so you know.
Oh, yes. And I think that, you know, the county's, the county's downgrading, we've not had, I don't think that we've had a long enough window yet to see the full impact of that because the case numbers generally lag behind a little bit, and so I think another month would allow us to have a lot more of that information. I do have a question, I received an email from a constituent, and I don't know if anyone else, because this one was just addressed to me, I don't know if this constituent sent it to others.
Regarding the driver's van and...
Yes.
She must have sent it out.
Okay, okay. So, so I guess I do have a little bit of a question there and probably would like to gain a little better understanding, because I know that, you know, sports aren't required to wear a mask, so does the same philosophy behind that, would that also say that, you know, for, you know, the spring play or whatever that may be, that it would be okay for them to, maybe while they're on stage, not wear masks, but then mask back up whenever they get offstage, that sort of thing, you know what I'm talking about? And I'm not necessarily saying I want to go in that direction, but if we're gonna make that exception for sports, I guess I'm kind of wondering, should we make that exception for things like the school play and that sort of thing? And I'm, I'm asking the question more than making a statement, I guess.
The play's gonna be a one-time event, so it's gonna be a showstopper if somebody comes down with a positive case. I mean, it's gonna knock out, you're gonna have to be quarantined for those that have been exposed to a positive case. I think it is consensus, because I've asked the question out at the high school, it is consensus that they continue to wear those masks. I just think that for the sake of all, all students, I'd hate to jeopardize their event, their show, or whatever the case may be, because we had one positive case.
Yeah, and that makes sense, that it's a one-time event and if they miss out on that one time, they don't get another chance, whereas a basketball team or a baseball team would have other games that they could, they could play. So I can buy that, yeah, yeah, I can understand that. Just wanted to ask that question, because I received the email, it made me think a little bit, huh?
Well, one of the things she brought up also was like choir and band, that for some students, it's difficult to sing through, not to be heard, but to, you know, sing through the mask, sometimes they're difficult to breathe in.
Breathe in, yeah.
I mean, you're not running up and down a court, but you're, you know, you're using all the same muscles and, so I mean, is there anything that can be done?
In a choir, you played just a little bit, you know, in a choir, you're projecting, you know, out among the choir, probably more so than just speaking, you know, you and me speaking right here, so there's probably even a, more of a risk being in a choir group.
I would add that CMO and their music department are even more cautious than the district is being. They require their band members to wear masks when they play, with a little hole in them, which we're not requiring because of the spacing that we're providing. So, I feel like what we're doing in our music department isn't as significant as what CMO was requiring, but is, has worked because we have not had spread in that department.
Sure. Are we allowing students in PE class to go without masks?
I asked Ms. Scheller that, she's in the back room, I'll let her respond.
They only if they're in physical activity, so if they're playing ping pong, they wear their mask.
Okay.
But if they're in up and down basketball scrimmage, then they go without, or if they're outside.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, so we will leave it up to the administrators to continue to monitor and to use their best judgment to keep our children safe and in schools.
Perfect, thank you.
Next up, we have our approval of transportation contracts. So the motion is to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a contract with Robinson Transport, Inc., and to execute the contract on behalf of the board for transportation services for three years for the 2021, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years, with an option to extend for up to two additional one-year extensions for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Glenn, discussion, Dr. Glass.
Mr. Crowe.
Or, Mr. Crowe.
We had put out the RFP, soliciting bus companies to bid on this. We had six companies show up at our mandatory pre-bid meeting, of which three of those companies, after meeting that and going through the RFP requirements, actually bid. On the second pull-down screen is the bid tabulation, and you can see the numbers, just to kind of go through that so you have an understanding. Did a breakdown of what our regular routes would be, that's basically picking kids up at the bus stops and dropping them... That's basically picking kids up at the bus stops and dropping them off at the schools, then picking them up at the schools, dropping them off at home. The special route in CPD stands for cost per day. Those are for our special service students, if they require like a wheelchair bus, or if they require some other type of accommodation. Other runs daily, that would be for early childhood, special education routes, after-school tutoring, explorers, that basically goes around to the other elementary schools, picks up the kids, then takes them back to Franklin for the explorer program. And then also special runs, this is your basic charter cost. So soccer team, field trips, band concerts, if JROTC were to go somewhere, this is what their charter rate is. And then the base annual bid basically combines all of these, but without the special runs, and you can see what the cost per year as our, our base cost would be. And based upon our existing relationship with Robinson, where they have been performing adequately for us, and also due to their, their bid numbers they came in, I'm recommending that we negotiate with Robinson, again, for the upcoming contract.
Do you have any questions? I'd just like to say I've been really impressed with the service they've provided us over the last, what, five years? Just from the standpoint that they've been willing to work with us when, you know, numbers were tight. At one point, they froze fuel costs to kind of combat some of the budget issues, you know, especially during COVID. They, they were very generous in refunding some of that that they could have contractually, you know, said, you know, you're under contract. And they've, they've been very good to work with, from what I've understood. And, you know, when we have issues, we can take those issues to them, and they, they correct them, and then report back on, on how they've been corrected. So I think that's a good thing. Plus, they know our district. I mean, they've, they've been here for five years.
I agree. I don't have any reservations going Robinson. They've been good. They, they started out, and, you know, trying to get a feel out for, for the district, and they've gotten better every year since. And so I really appreciate everything that they've done for us. Also appreciate Mr. Crowe, this is a lot of work that goes into this. I mean, putting out a bid specification on transportation and stuff, I know how much work goes into it, so thank you, Josh, for, for handling this. He did a tremendous job. All the companies were very happy. They got the information they requested, from contracts to payrolls to Teamster contracts to all of that, and it was just a lot that goes into, to putting this act of bid. So thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Do you know how, how frequently do they upgrade their buses?
It's a question. So with this new contract, what they will do is they will replace half the fleet automatically with new bus, with new models buses. And then years two and three, they'll replace a quarter, a quarter, by the end of year three, if we choose to like to go into the two one-year extensions, we'll have all new buses that year. That's also based upon, currently right now, they have many models that are 2018 or newer. So, and those buses have a lot of miles left on them, so there's not a need to replace everything right off the bat. There's still a lot of service years left, and the quality of the buses is still, are good, especially, you know, after last year, basically losing the third and school year on routes. Those buses, you know, they were maintained, but they didn't get miles on them per se. So, and that, that was also across the board with other companies as well, too, were part of the negotiation process, and kind of what new things or what extra things would you bring, you know, to set you apart, that all the companies had said that, and it's basically the same timeline with looking at, coming in with newer buses as well. And newer buses does translate, you know, to student safety and staff safety as well.
Do all of the buses now have onboard cameras?
All the buses have onboard cameras. Those cameras, though, they are electronic. From time to time, they do break down. The day of the service technician, as soon as we're aware of it, broken down. They do go through regular maintenance, but there is times that, you know, maybe I get cameras down. We did get that, that particular angle, but we have three-angle cameras on there, one from front to back, back to front, and then from driver down the stairs. So if we miss it on one camera angle, we'll get it on another camera angle. And our buses do all have radios, GPS monitor. We can track when they're actually at a stop, when they go through. They can track drop-off time when they're at a particular stop, and they all have emergency buttons on them as well, too, that it's a one push button, and it sends out an alert to school staff and RSROs as well, too, if there's ever anything that happens. A couple of years ago, we had four buses get hit by vehicles, you know, I mean, and they were fully stopped, and, you know, it's a big yellow vehicle that you can't miss, but it happened four times. You know, one person even left their front bumper there with their license plates, waiting to get the bus, and we were able to track that down, so.
The other, the other last question I have, so a couple of years back, when we were looking at district-wide communication systems, the radios, there was some talk within their presentation about the utilization of a radio network from here at different locations, so that when athletic teams are going to different locations, they can still remain in contact? Is that...
We have that. It has not, it has not progressed to where if the bus is in St. Louis, we can still use our own radios. At that point, everybody has cell phones, and the bus drivers have bus-provided cellphones, where we have those numbers and access, you know, and being able to make contact with them. And in this day and age, too, you know, every kid almost has a cellphone as well, too, in that regard. But as far as the coverage, we've added more repeaters in this area. We can pick up north of LaSalle on the interstate to pretty much the Scott City exit, all the way over to the river. There's one particular road that, out by Kid Country Club, that gets a little staticky, but that's, there's not much we can do there because of the terrain, but we're still able to keep in contact with the buses and still follow up. And it's very momentarily, when it's actually a little staticky, just because, you know, the bus is moving in and out of, you know, kind of when you're talking on your cellphone, oh, hang on, oh, there you are, again. So we're able to keep good contact with the buses.
But they're, they're, they work with us on...
Yes.
Upgrading those radios?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? No? All right, so the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a contract with Robinson Transport, Inc., and to execute a contract on behalf of the board for transportation services for three years for the 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24 school years, with an option to extend for up to two one-year extensions for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years. There's no further discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you for all of that work, putting that together for us. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you.
And lastly, this evening, we have a motion to authorize the superintendent, who is designated, to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board to purchase textbook materials for the K-12 English, English Language Arts Program at a total cost of $823,275.67. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Glenn, Dr. Glass, or, or Chris Turner?
I think, I think Chris did that on purpose. He gave that back to Josh. So we've been working actually on curriculum, pretty much off and on all year, but we've really started digging into a textbook adoption. It's been eight-plus years since the district has adopted a textbook for kids, so we felt that we needed to put a serious investment in the research behind it. And one of the resources that we used was edreport.org. It evaluates those, that curriculum for you as well, but then the teachers also dug into the meat and potatoes of what is actually in those curriculums. So I can speak for high school and junior high. Middle school chose to go with elementary, and they were in my meeting for a little bit, but then they felt that that was too old or too high of a level, so they moved down to the elementary and was working with K-4. So in high school, I have all of this here in this packet. High school's in the back. Just with high school, they evaluated three different curriculums, and they chose McGraw-Hill's Study Sync. The things that I was wanting them to do research on is a writing component, the academic vocabulary, and then text complexity. So they were really working on looking at those three things, and then I gave them some other things to look for when they were going through the textbook. I gave them Agenda every time we met. We talked about a few things. One of the big things was the alignment of standards, and also the digital platform, because in junior high and high school, they're one-to-one, and we needed to make sure that digital platform was robust and that it was engaging for kids. As we know, this year, we found out how important it is to have a platform that is engaging for kids. And so this is, this, this curriculum will also be able to use if students need to work from home as well. And the big thing is, this is a seven-to-eight-year adoption. Does it have longevity? And so when you, when you purchase a digital platform, they update it year to year to year to year, so that we're going to get current curriculum for seven years, seven or eight years. So it's very important that you look at that as well, so that you're, you're getting the bang for the buck for, for a long term. And so you can look through, and I'm not going to go through all of these, you can see what they've done. They, they did a presentation, and Ms. Turner did as well, for elementary. The writing component for junior high is writable. It connects with into reading and into Lit, and Ms. Turner can talk about, the third through eighth grade chose HMH into Lit, and they didn't even work together. Junior high and middle school and elementary didn't work together, but they felt that that was the best curriculum for them. And it has a strong writing component. High school has a strong writing component that's called No Red Ink, which will work for them. So those were, those were really indicators of whether it was going to be a strong curriculum or not, because we are lacking in writing, I think, across the district, probably elementary as well. So it's important that we have an alignment all the way K through 12th grade, and I think we've done a pretty, pretty darn good job to be able to do that. So I'm going to turn the rest of it over to Ms. Turner.
So ours looked a little bit different, because we have, really, we had six buildings participating, whereas they kind of met on collab days, and they did a lot of work in their own buildings, and then he did have junior high and high school come together some, and Central Academy, whereas, so we met weekly after school on most Mondays. Sometimes it got pushed off till Tuesday, depending on if Monday was a holiday or whatever. But we had a representative from every school and every grade level. So I had five kindergarten representatives, five first grade, five second grade. Middle school had a fifth grade representative, and then we also had a Jefferson representative for fifth grade, and then we had the sixth grade representative from both Central Academy and Central Middle School. And, and kind of sixth grade actually kind of went back and forth some, but it really worked out, it really worked out well. And so the key components that we were looking for at, in the younger grades, were a very, very strong phonemic awareness program and phonics-based reading program for K-2, particularly K-1. But our kids right now are struggling with how, how do you sound words out, and how do you read? And they're leaving first grade, not all of our kids, but a larger portion than we would like, are leaving first grade, not reading on grade level. And so that was really, really important, to that we get back to those basics in kindergarten and first grade. We wanted to be able to, and then writing, and that was really K-12, but writing is, in our last resource that we had, was not as strong as it had been in the past. And so those teachers that are really, really great teachers are still doing a great job of teaching writing. But when you have new teachers come in, and if they don't have those resources and those instructional tools, we really need to make sure that our resources support the teachers where they're at. And if they are veteran, 20-year teachers with all of these tools in the toolbox, then the resource, whatever textbook we choose, whatever company we use, supports them where they're at. If they are a first-year teacher right out of college, and they need almost a script some days to get through, that the resource that we have purchased provides them that script and that really support to be a great teacher, so that your child's education is not dependent on who, who's standing in front of the classroom, and that we really are horizontally aligned and we're vertically aligned. That's something we talked about a lot, was horizontal alignment amongst all kindergarten, and then vertical alignment from K through 12. And so kindergarten, first and second grade chose to go with Zainer Blozer and Superkids, and it is a very, very strong phonics piece. It does have the writing and the handwriting all built into the program. At kindergarten and first grade, it's very strong with the writing component. We did feel like in second grade, we needed a little more for the writing, and Zainer Blozer has an additional writing component that starts in second grade called Jump Into Writing. And that is a writer's workshop format, but it is completely organized for them. So I taught writer's workshop, and it was hard. Like, I had to have all these different resources organized, and it was a lot of training. And we are still going to support our teachers with training and professional development through this, but we also needed a program that set it up for them, and didn't, again, it didn't require the teacher to have had years and years of practice in order for them to be an effective teacher. And so kind of, if you look at this very first page that says "The Process," you can kind of see how horizontal, or how vertically aligned we are between reading and writing all the way down. And there is, third and fourth grade, the writing component is a follow-up to second, third, and fourth grade are all the same writing component, but third through sixth grade is the same reading piece. And so Writeables is actually the HMH writing component that goes along with Into Reading, or he was talking about junior high's Into Lit. It's the same program, they just call it something different when they get to seventh grade, but it is the same, it's set up exactly the same. And the Writeables is 100% online, and our elementary teachers through fourth grade really wanted something where kids could still write pen and paper and develop some of those penmanship things. Doesn't mean they can't do it online, and there is an online component, but there is also a very strong writing, like, penmanship component up through third grade in it as well. And so that was one reason we went with the Zainer Blozer for writing through fourth grade, instead of adding the Writeables on in third and fourth grade, was because Writeables is 100% online. You type everything. There's no black line masters to print out and things of that nature, which is great once you get to middle school, but we still need some of those elementary kids to handwrite. One thing that I, and then all the research is in there, we really gave teachers a lot of, of voice in this. One thing we will do this summer is align these resources directly to the standards and come up with the pacing. We both have time reserved in June to do that with teacher teams, but by purchasing now, it will allow us to have professional development with these resources prior to the end of the school year. The teachers will have the resources in hand when they align that curriculum to those standards. And that, to me, is really important. The last time I did curriculum, we, we wrote the curriculum, and we came up with the activities, and then we got the resources in hand. So we didn't have the resources aligned in our pacing charts, and so that's one reason we've kind of changed this format a little bit. The price is a little bit more than what it has been in the past. A couple of things is that we really feel like we have to improve ELA in our district, and so we wanted to make sure that we were getting the right product. The last time we did this, it was probably around $500,000 K-12. The consumables, which are considered like the workbooks that students write in, were only purchased for three years. So that means every single year after three years, like, we've been building that into our annual budget, and, or principles have been, but it's been an ongoing thing. So by, we actually purchased a six-year consumable piece for the Into Reading, and Into Literature's an online piece, so the online subscriptions will all be six years as well. years as well. So that will get us almost to that next point when we're ready to look at resources again. So that's a reason it's a little bit more expensive as well.
Anyone have any questions? So I'm really happy to see the emphasis on writing and getting our, our writing scores up. I know that's been a real struggle for us for a while. So I know a few years back, we really talked about trying to incorporate the writing piece across the entire curriculum for K through 12, including science, math, so not only they're just doing math or they're just reading about science, but they're reading and then writing a report about science. And so they're, they're utilizing those skills across the whole curriculum. Are we still putting an emphasis on those type of things along with this ELA piece? Or?
Well, one of the things we looked at in K-6, and then I'll hand the mic off to Dr. Benyon, but K-6 is, in, in the materials, as far as the stories go and the, um, the content, there were two things we really looked for. One was diversity of characters and then the second one was, um, nonfiction, social studies, science connections, um, so that at that elementary, particularly K-4 level, we don't have to, like, it's all integrated instruction and we are going to align, um, these resources to the science standards and the social studies standards, not through detail, real, like, we're not going to spend weeks on it this summer because that's really what you do during science curriculum, but we are going to pace them out where if in science, we're, we're learning about the life cycle and then, and their stories or content and writing pieces that are in the ELA curriculum at the elementary level, that those are being addressed at the same time, right? So when those stories come up in ELA, we're teaching the science unit on the life cycle at the same time so that those activities go back and forth and kind of do what you're talking about. That's a lot easier at an elementary classroom where you have the same teacher all day long. And so they can really weave those, um, contents in and out.
If Writable in general is that way in general?
Writable is, is, is just that way in general just because of the curriculum that matches up with their, uh, the curriculum for, for HMH. So seventh and eighth grade are already going to have that cross-curricular connection. Um, now in high school, it's more of, uh, structure on how to write and, and writing different deposit, suppository, depositories or those type of things. So it's, it's a little bit different, complex, it's a little, a little bit more complex in the high school level. So what we've done is we've done No Red Ink, which helps with grammar, writing structure, and different writing styles. So it, it kind of switches once you get to high school because it's, because it's more upper-level writing pieces.
I do think maybe now that I think about it, as I was listening to you talk too, I think what you're, one of the questions you were asking was like, in social studies class, are they asking them to write, like at the junior high and the high school? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Right. Because a few years back?
This teaches them to be able to do that.
To translate it.
Into the other content areas.
I do think it is one thing that as we, this is the first core, next year's math, the following year is social studies, and then the following year is science. And so I do think that as we go through the process for adopting new materials in those content areas to really, again, those cross-curricular connections to writing, to math and things like that, we have to figure out a way to support ELA and math in those other content areas. Absolutely.
Because I think if students are utilizing those skills in other classes rather than just English, that it becomes more of a second nature to them and less of a, a burden to them, that if you're just going to English and you have to write a paper, that's, oh man, I have to write a paper. But if you're using that skill throughout all of your classes, then it becomes more easy for them and less of a struggle.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think you're going to see more and more textbooks when we get to those other adoptions that you're going to have that already within their, within their content too.
Anyone have any questions?
I guess that all these platforms will interact with Canvas and the Chromebooks and all that. I mean, it's a stupid question, but just say it out loud.
We made sure of all of that.
Super Kids does not have an overly robust online platform. That was probably its weakest thing that we're doing with, in K-2, but honestly, the phonics and the phonemic awareness outweighed that. There is a program that I am going to build into our budget when we purchase for next year called Teacher Made and it, and it really is great at taking any kind of black line master or online quiz and I'll, and really making it into a digital component. And so right now, teachers can get the free version of that on pro, they can get the free pro version through the summer, like a trial that's out right now. Um, but Ms. Schuster has already started working with trying to figure out how we can work in teacher teams to get those materials uploaded, um, specifically for Super Kids. That is the one that does not have a strong online component, but in kindergarten, I don't know that it needed to have quite as strong of online component. Once they hit third grade, that HMH component is really, is really strong. Um, but the, the instructional content outweighed the online content for us at Super Kids.
Canvas integration is just going to be fifth through 12th grade.
Okay.
The rest of them will work with Google Classroom.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to authorize a superintendent who is designated to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board to purchase textbook materials for the K-12 English Language Arts Program at a total cost of $824,275.67. There's no further comments, questions, or discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. All right. And that concludes our business for the evening. Uh, next up is information proposals from board members.
Mr. President, I just want to take an opportunity to, and I'm hoping this isn't the last opportunity I have to thank, uh, both you and Ms. Ware, uh, for your dedicated service to the board. The two of you have, have served this district honorably, uh, for a very long time. And, uh, I jokingly told somebody years ago who was telling me that he was going to run for school board that it was the worst job in government because you're, you're dealing with people's most precious possession and so no decision you make will ever be good enough. I didn't take my own advice, but, uh, but the two of you have carried yourselves, uh, honorably and always with an eye on what's in the best interest of the students of the district, uh, and, and been paid, uh, way too little, meaning zero dollars, uh, for your service through the years. So I just want to take this opportunity, and, and I hope it's not the last opportunity I have to, to do this, uh, but to say thank you both.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I second that.
But I will say, it's, it's hard to believe, I've been on the board for 15 years and hopefully through the grace of God and with the voters coming out, uh, they'll allow me to serve three more years. Uh, there's a lot of good things going on in this district right now and I'd like to see some of them through to completion. But if I'm not on the board in next month, then I'd just like to, again, say thank you to everybody. Uh, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you, especially the, the staff and the administrators. Dr. Glass, it's, uh, been a long journey and I've enjoyed it.
Enjoyable.
And, uh, Beth, thank you very much for, um, keeping us in line and getting us on track sometimes and making sure these meetings run flawlessly because without you, all, all people who have served as a president know she's the power behind the, the voice. So thank you for all you've done. And, uh, Lindsay, thank you, um, for serving as treasurer and especially for all your hard work and keeping our finances in, in check and getting us through the audits and some of those really tough years, but, uh, thank you for your hard work and dedication. And, uh, Krista and, and Howard, thank you for, uh, for serving the district. I really appreciate it. And Mandy, thank you for what you do because without you, a lot of our students would go unserved and, um, really? Wow. Really appreciate it because I've, I've known some of those students and what you've done for them has been truly amazing. And, um, I know Dina was there before you, but what you've done with the students since she left is, is, you are behind the scenes and you don't get the credit you deserve, so thank you for that. And Mr. Josh, thank you for all you've done. Um, you've been a, a man with many hats and, um, uh, really appreciate all the, the hard work, especially through transportation and dealing with facilities and, I mean, we've got a lot of buildings and a lot of things that go on and all the stuff that you've done, um, thank you. So.
If I could say one other thing, I'm not, I'm not a person of a lot of words. I already said, you know, and Kyle, I did all that, but I, I would not feel, um, content after this board meeting if I don't say this. When I first came on board, I, I, I want to give a special thank you to Kyle. We have had a phenomenal board and I know I could go to anyone and ask questions and, and get the answers. But when I first came on board, there was a lot, I've been on many boards. Um, a school board is very different than other boards, um, especially when you're dealing with, uh, MSBA and, um, all of these, uh, policies and, uh, state policies and all of that, they're very different. Uh, school boards are different and I learned that. Kyle took me under his wing and honestly, you, many of you don't know, but I'm so sure, Kyle could tell. I recall Kyle, is it too late? I, um, sorry for calling, is it too late? I have a couple of questions. And he always answered my questions. You know, he was always, um, there. So he, for me, he's been a phenomenal, Mr. President, um, he's been a phenomenal board member and as you all and the others that I worked with also. But I just want to take a special note and say thank you very much for taking me under your wing and answering all of my questions, even though some of them I know now were ridiculous, but I did know and I wanted to do things, I wanted to be proper and, and do things correctly. So thank you very much, Kyle.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Being a great leader, thank you.
And Randy? I would be remiss if I did not recognize you for all the hard work that you and your, your students do and have done throughout the years. I know the CTC is, has done a great job of keeping our, um, our, our meetings televised and, um, recorded so that people that cannot attend the meetings can get online and, um, and can see what work we do, um, at our meetings. A lot of times, people don't have the foggiest idea of what we do until they can actually see it. And, uh, I think a lot of them appreciate the efforts that you put into making sure those are available. So thank you for all of your hard work and thank you for making him look good on some of those snow day videos.
That's a lot of work. That's the hardest job you've got. Well, we serve and you're plugging.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, well, and with all of that being said, um, I hope I'm back in a month, but if I'm not, I bid you all, I fare well due. And if there's no other comments or discussion, I will, for the last time as board president this year, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Ms. Ware?
Second.
Ms. Glenn? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.